All right, we are back in open session. So the first item up is public comment, and we do have a public comment from...
Johan.
Johan, okay, thank you. Johan Bayer?
Hello, I'm Johan Bayer. It's my wife Tiffany Jasper's from 510 Oudale Road. I came last month. So I'm here today because last month I came before the school board and the district officials to raise my concern that the district, in implementing its policy for accelerated placement, was placing the narrow bureaucratic interests of the district administration over the education of our students. This was a concern that I raised last month. In the months since I came here, our families had no response, just like in the process when we asked the school district to admit Kate one day early. We received very little response and had to harass and control the school district in order to get a response to get the process started. We still have not had a response. My primary concern that I raised at the time was that the district was not following its written policy. I'm going to review the written policy really quickly. There's three points in the written policy. This is Policy Six, Part 135, the Accelerated Placement Program. This is to make the decision of whether or not we should admit children before the September cutoff date. Kate is born September 2nd. We had advocated for Kate to be let in this year into kindergarten. All right? So, point one, decision-making processes are fair, equitable, involve multiple individuals. This was my main concern, the multiple individuals that were involved with this. Principal Gorman from Blythe, the administrators of Kate's test that she took for this, Kate's current teachers, and most importantly, I think, Kate's parents, all advocated for her to start. We have our reasons. This is not the time or place to discuss those reasons why we thought Kate should be in kindergarten this year. That was between us and the school district. But this was completely ignored. There was absolutely no credence given to Principal Gorman's position, the implementers of the test position, our position as parents or her teachers, completely ignored. That's point one. Point two, the processes that provide a student's parents or guardians with written notification that their child is eligible, and notification of a decision affecting their child's participation. We received nothing in writing, period. I brought that up at the board meeting, and again, we still have yet to receive anything in writing, even though after I brought this up at the board meeting a month ago. Nobody from the district decided to reach out and say, "Hey Johan, I think that you're misreading Policy Six, Part 135. Here's our position. Thank you for your concern." We're concerned about Kate's education to nothing. We received one in-person meeting where Dr. Doll said, "Sorry, Kate's not coming in this year. The rules are the rules." She didn't, you know, it doesn't really matter the reasons for that. There was nothing in writing, all right? Part three is the assessment processes. I went over in more detail a month ago. There's no reason to rehash it. She scored 130 on the IQ test. She's eligible for Mensa. She's not eligible for kindergarten. She scored extremely well on two out of the three tests. She did not quite meet the bar on the other one. And I brought up last time, when I was here, to say that if, in fact, it is the school board's desire that this policy, that this particular test that I discussed last time, was the way that we want to decide whether or not kindergarteners can start a day or two early, I think that it needs to change. There needs to be a discussion about this. And the reason is, you know, it's essentially a bar that's not capable of being passed. These tests are designed for children who are eight years old or older. It's why our gifted program doesn't start until third grade, because these tests don't really work for children this age. So if you're asking that a kindergartner who doesn't know how to read yet is at 75% and 90% of children who have already graduated from kindergarten, you're just saying no, that children cannot be admitted, all right? And that might as well just be the policy, just no. The state of Illinois in 2018 passed a law, we mentioned it in our written letter that we handed out, requiring school districts to put in plans to make it easier for accelerated placement. This didn't happen. I quickly want to situate this in a wider context. So I would like a response from the school district, any kind of written response. That's the main reason that I'm here. I would still encourage the school board to reconsider this policy. This was a sad morning. This morning, we dropped off Margaret, my older daughter, at school. Kate was not in there. She was crying on the way home because all of her classmates from pre-K were going into Blythe's front doors, and she wasn't, because she was born one day later. All right. I just quickly want to situate this in a wider context, all right? All summer, barbecues and at, you know, family gatherings, birthday parties, I've been talking with other parents in the district about this. There's been a lot of frustration expressed, both about early admittance and about the gifted, the advanced learning program, which I believe that we'll be having more conversations about in the future. I talked to one father who was losing sleep over his child was born a few days after Kate because he just couldn't fight, he didn't want to fight the school district over this question, even though it was him, his wife, and his firm belief that his child should be admitted into kindergarten this year. These conversations have come in the context of what a lot of people in this year have been talking about. And I want to situate this in a wider political context now, of an abundance agenda, an idea that one of the reasons we have so many political problems in this country is because bureaucracies are, again, placing the narrow interests of defending that bureaucracy over their core mission, which is to educate our children, all right? So my family watches with concern right now that we have a greater chance of contracting measles than at any time in generations. We're watching with concern. You know, internet personalities running around with a chainsaw in DC cutting up the Department of Education. Some of these things trickle back to local districts, again, placing the narrow interests of that bureaucracy over their core mission, their core mission, build a bridge, issue a building permit, educate our children. Again, I believe that the policy that was adopted by the school board was not followed. I brought that to the board's attention, and I've received no response. I think that it's better for our politics at the local level to have trust in our institutions, to garner our institutions' legitimacy that we demand and the accountability that we demand. I think that my daughter was failed by the school district. And again, we have our reasons why we think she should be in kindergarten this year, but the policy itself was not followed, all right? That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you for coming out. I can't tell you, your voice has been heard. I was not here at the last meeting. Thank you for running the last two for work purposes. I heard your last public comment. I listened to it. I have had some dialogue with Dr. Ryan Toye about the policy on a broader scale. We will, I can commit to you that we are having dialogue around your concerns. Just, things just don't move quite that fastly, and I know that's very frustrating, but our job as a board is to hear these concerns, ask the appropriate questions, and figure out what changes are or not that we actually made. So for whatever it's worth, your voice has been heard. We are having dialogue around this, and I agree with you that you are owed a response, and we will make sure that you get one. Okay.
All right. That is the only public comment that I have, and I don't see anybody else here. So with that, are there any changes to the proposed changes to the agenda? Nope. Okay. So the first part, first item here is the opening, the public hearing for the fiscal year 2026 budget. Is there a motion for the Board of Education to open the budget hearing for approving the fiscal year 26 budget?
Some move.
Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay. Ms. Claps? Hi. Mr. Olek?
Hi.
Mr. Barsavi?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Ms. Gunn?
Aye.
Ms. Kalik?
Aye.
And Mr. Mayorhead?
Aye.
Okay, the hearing is open.
Does anybody have any comments on the fiscal year budget? No. Okay. Is there a motion that the Board of Education declare the budget hearing for approving the fiscal year 26 budget to be closed?
Some move.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Okay. Mr. Olek?
Aye.
Mr. Barsavi?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Ms. Gunn?
Aye.
Ms. Kalik?
Aye.
Ms. Claps?
Aye.
And Mr. Mayorhead? Aye. Thank you. The next item is the superintendent's report.
All right. Now, I just have a couple of quick announcements. One, I wanted to thank our summer school team. It seems like summer school just ended, because it did, and we started school today. So probably more importantly, just excited that I think everybody at the table here had their own children starting school in a new classroom, a new grade level this year, so very exciting. And had an opportunity to visit all five schools this morning around arrival time. Couldn't be everywhere all at the same time, but just really thrilled to see all of our teachers back and kids, new kids, and all of our returning students back. And things were very, very smooth, I think, really, truly, at all five buildings. So anyway, very exciting on that. I did share with you the student enrollment update. As of mid-August, there've been a few minor changes, sort of both up and down, since this was put together, what, a week ago? So sort of, as is somewhat typical for us, there's just some fluctuation in class size across the buildings. Even with our best efforts around our flexible boundaries policy and our assignments, some assignments are still very challenging to make, wanting to put children at a reasonable distance from their school, and then balance the class sizes. Obviously, when there's a sibling involved, we always keep families and siblings together, so you'll see some pockets and some variation. It really isn't specific even to one school. It's very much kind of grade level specific and then spread across the schools. But all are very reasonable and appropriate class sizes. And I'll just, you know, my other interesting observation, you've heard from me before, is this idea that there's not one classroom where there's just one adult in charge, right? I mean, between the resource people, special education, social work services, reading, math support, EL support, et cetera, as I walked by classrooms today, I don't think I saw any classroom where there's just one adult in there, right? And that's by design, and that is, I think, really a wonderful part of just the resources that our district has to provide and to offer. So even when we look at a class size as high as 25, and that is our maximum at the elementaries, and we have not had to exceed that, I'm happy to report, but that's a number that we've kind of looked at as kind of our, you know, red line, so to speak, and we're in a good spot with all of that. So that is our enrollment update, and you have all of that in front of you. And then just two quick announcements. September 17th, we have our next regular Board of Education meeting, and prior to that meeting, we're going to have an informal dinner with board members and our new teachers, as well as their mentors, as an opportunity for you to meet all of them. And then, as we've been doing over the past couple of years, an opportunity to introduce them publicly, whether they both come to the meeting and then we share their trading cards. We did this at our institute day on Monday, and we'll do that again in September. Obviously, didn't invite them to come to the board meeting tonight, as this is their first day of teaching, full day, and I think it's, probably everybody went home a little bit tired, so. And then, once again, we're going to host our social with RFPA and the Board of Education, and that will be on October 14th. And thanks to Kathy for planning and organizing that on our behalf. So quick, quick, there, although there's a lot of important stuff happening today.
So I think you answered this, but I've just been wondering about the overall enrollment report. The numbers are up slightly or small, I guess?
I think we're up by 18 overall, or district-wise.
Yeah, I guess I'm wondering, are there any of these classes or anything, any of the dives or expands that are concerning or something to watch?
Not really. It falls kind of in our, you know, if you look at it, the kindergarten overall district-wide class size is 163. Our highest class size is our eighth grade class at 209 students. But there seems to be kind of a range in which we sort of ebb and flow. Students seem to also come to the district. We take new students in, obviously, any new students, but across the grade level. So even starting a little bit lower in kindergarten, things seem to sort of increase upward by the time we have first graders and second graders. We thought we might see a difference in that with full-day kindergarten. I think we've seen, we used to see a really big jump, a lot of new first graders, because families probably went somewhere else for a full-day kindergarten program. So we're seeing less of sort of that really marked jump, but there is still kind of a natural growth across the grade levels, I would say. And I know, I look at it, Dan, also, and I try to say, is there a particular grade level? Are we starting to see a decline in enrollment? And I don't see these things falling into a trend or a pattern in that way.
What about something like, I mean, like Hollywood and a couple of these grades now in the low teens? Maybe a misunderstanding of 12 from this time last year. Does that mean we had like 24th, fifth grade?
So what, the reason it looks like a minus 12 is because it's following that same small cohort of kids upward, so it's the difference in the fifth grade last year compared to this year. But you're right. In Hollywood, you will see there are three grade levels. It's first and third and fifth. They're at 12 or 13 students. Interestingly, kindergarten is back at 18 for the start of this school year. Second grade's at 20, and fourth grade's at 19, which are more typical of our class sizes. So Hollywood is always kind of an enigma bit. It's a unique part of our community. It's on the other side of First Avenue. It's very hard to transfer children either way, right? Children that wouldn't expect to go to Hollywood. Same with people that do expect to go to Hollywood to be transferred elsewhere. Not that we'd be doing that with those class sizes, but I think it's just a pattern that we've been observing for a couple of years, now that there's some very small pockets. But it doesn't seem to represent a pattern that, let's say, that there's a declining enrollment overall in the Hollywood section, because, again, was pleased to see kindergarten at 18 to start the year.
Any other questions about enrollment?
Yeah, I think the change, the plus-minus change that's represented on that chart there, it's based on the grade level from the year prior, not following that cohort.
Yes.
Yeah.
Has an invite gone out for the fall social thing yet? Or we just pick a date?
We picked October 14th, but an invite has not gone out yet.
Yeah, time and place is not determined.
Probably also at Irish time to get, right?
Again, favorite spot.
Two sweet good spots, people like that.
I just threw that on my calendar to try to see if I can pop in for a bit.
Yep.
All right. So the next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. Could I have the board secretary please read tonight's consent agenda?
Tonight's consent agenda consists of minutes of the following previous meetings, July 16th, regular business meeting, July 16th, closed session, the personnel report as presented, the payables pre-list as of July 31st, the payables pre-list as of August 20th, the EdRed dues, and D-96 strategic communication proposal.
Does any board member wish to remove any item from the consent agenda before we vote? All right. Is there a motion that the Board of Education approve tonight's consent agenda as presented?
Some move. Second.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Okay. Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Ms. Gunn?
Aye.
Ms. Kalik?
Aye.
Ms. Claps?
Aye.
Mr. Olek?
Aye.
Mr. Barsavi?
Aye.
And Mr. Mayorhead?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
Next item is Riverside Education Council. I don't see anybody here. Right, yeah, okay. So next up is board member comments. I'm excited for school to start today. Put some structure back into, some firm structure back into the day for the kids.
It was an exciting morning for my family and my dog.
And your dog? Your dog was excited for the kids to be out of the house, too?
I liked walking along with the kids and meeting all the other dogs and all the other kids. It was a great time.
All right. Once with more activities in the session in school, we might have more comments to bring up later. So that brings us to old business. So the approval of the fiscal year 2026 budget is our first action item. Is there a motion for the Board of Education to approve the fiscal year 26 budget as presented?
Some move.
Selena or anybody, any, do we need to make any comments here? I guess we had the one change with the security thing, but other than that?
And actually, Mark Kuzniewski is available on Zoom if there are any questions.
That's why we have the camera.
Yeah.
Is there any questions about it before we vote? I don't see the specific memo in here, but this, if I recall correctly, this was added 1.2 million roughly for the security camera.
Yeah, so when the initial draft was presented by Jim back in June, it didn't include the security infrastructure upgrades. And so there was a revision from the draft to this amount of 1,275,446. And in order to fund that security infrastructure upgrade, the board will eventually need to make a fund transfer from the Ed Fund to the Capital Projects Fund. This will be similar to what we did for the, in June, for the projects at Ames and Hauser in Hollywood.
Yep. It is in here. I got the wrong one. Okay, thank you. All right, if no other questions, Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Gunn?
Aye.
Ms. Claps?
Aye.
Mr. Olek?
Aye.
Mr. Barsavi?
Aye.
Ms. Kalik?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
And Mr. Mayorhead?
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes.
All right. The next item on the agenda is the Press Plus 118 policy, which we've had a couple rounds of discussion on, including last session, last meeting. Is there a motion for the Board of Education to approve the second reading and adoption of Press Plus Number 118 policies and Policy 2:150, which is our committee's policy as presented?
Some move.
All right. Any discussion or comments prior to us voting?
Yeah, I mean, we did a first read at the last board meeting, so was not going to walk through all of them again. However, I appreciate the board members doing their reading of the changes and bringing about questions that led to thoughtful discussion and then follow-up from the committee. So there were just a couple of questions that did come up. 119 is separate, right? Okay.
Yeah.
We'll motion on that one separate. Okay. One of the questions was in regards to, as we know, there is a brand-new policy that was created, and kind of as a result of that, Dan, you had brought up the question about the counseling, the question about the counseling services. So we received some guidance in regards to why that is. I think Marlo, during the meeting, had even said, "Oh, it's likely because of these new, like, Article 26A situations," and that is kind of our understanding as to why. So the 12-year-olds kind of receiving counseling services without parental permission in consultation with our attorneys, it was explained that this has always sort of been allowable, but this new 26A kind of makes it all the more important to clarify that in policy. And there is kind of a maximum number that is required or can happen without parental consent, but this does require that, you know, the district communicate this to families and to students who are over the age of 12. And so the action that we will need to take, that our leadership will have to take, is updating the parent handbook once the policy is approved.
We're talking about updating the parent handbook, and we know parents have read that parent handbook, signed and approved it already, so we'll look at also some distribution of a communication that would also re-explain that this is an option for children 12 and older. And it is, as Stephanie said, it is limited to a maximum of eight sessions. It's actually defined in the law, eight sessions, I think, at 90 minutes apiece. So again, it's not our goal to be working with children without the knowledge of parents, but sometimes there are extreme situations where a child may need to share something without the consent of a parent. And this policy just highlights that.
And then, the other one that there was a question on was seven. Did you have anything on that one?
No, I was going to go to 719.
719.
Where you were going, okay.
Oh, I can let you go. It was in regards to student behavior, and it was more that there was now a definition in the policy itself on sexting. And I think Selena brought up a really good point, just kind of like parsing through what that definition was, and then something like a recipient of, right, being subject to, what's it called? Like, I can't think of the word.
Discipline.
Discipline. I know there's lots of flexibility, but essentially, yeah, it was told to us that this is language that press, again, in their continual trying to improvement, they kind of created this language. So it's not required by law. This is not the statutory language. So the board can choose to remove that part of the language if interested. But again, just reminded that there is a lot of flexibility in the implementation of these.
Yeah, so on this one in particular, I was looking for this earlier, and I kept scrolling right past it, but this one, we have two different options in here, so I think I'm going to have to redo this motion with the one that we want, because it says "as presented," and both of these are in here.
Right. So there is one that just takes out the word receiving, because that is sort of board discretion, if you don't want to have it there. And then there's one that has it there. And then, as Stephanie pointed out, that the administrative procedures allow us the flexibility. This isn't a must. It's more of a, if this were to happen, you know, something to be considered. I'm, I'd be comfortable either way, just knowing that we have the flexibility in terms of how we interpret situations, so it really is a board question.
And then, in all honesty, I think that I would be very much in favor of the option removing the language as well as reporting that back to press. It's kind of somewhat disconcerting to hear that they're adding things that are extra.
Yeah, and, you know, the attorney shared, and I don't quite have the right, it's like the juvenile code doesn't include receiving, so it's an addition. I, you know, again, I don't want to speak for press, but I think it was this idea that, you know, what if children are receiving it because somehow they've invited the receipt of it, and that's something that we would sort of dig into and get and understand through just what we work to do in terms of understanding why children may be involved in a situation. So as I said, I would also be comfortable, and if we do take it out, we can certainly let press know.
I think my preference is for the word receiving. I think any child that is receiving sexting is likely being harassed or victimized. And so that we would have it in line with the rest of sexting acts that would require disciplinary action is just not like consistent with what I believe is appropriate for a recipient of somebody who's being sent things that they shouldn't be.
I agree. And I think the word right after it, possessing, has a different connotation. And like Selena said, I think that the receiving kind of makes it, puts it like somehow will like put blame on the victim rather than possessing, meaning like somebody's receiving it, but they're keeping it for a reason or something like that. Yeah, I agree. I think the word should be removed, especially because I think that that doesn't have good, like, it doesn't look good if that's how we're supporting, like, of actual victim getting sexting.
Actually, that's a really good call out, Marlo. I hadn't thought about it that way, because I could go either way for the reasons that Martha had mentioned, is there could be a situation where you're inviting, trying to get, you know, loophole it and send it to me. That is probably a very narrow way of thinking about it. The engagement here from everything, not an expert in this, but from what I hear and what I read and what I see, it's much more broad than just receiving. You're usually engaged in multiple different facets of this, so. But I think the possessing piece kind of, yeah. If you get it and delete it, that's one thing. If you get it and you keep it, then that's the possessing piece of it. So actually, I kind of like that viewpoint. Okay. I'm behind it. That's at least four. Is anybody opposed and want to keep it in? Feel strongly about that? No? Okay. Yeah, I'm going to re-motion with that. That was the only one that had a question in it, right? Like an actual, like, modification.
Under 118, yeah, 119 has discussion for something.
Yeah. For this one, that was the only one where we actually have a modification. Okay, so I'm going to...
But before you re-motion, did you want to talk about any of the other one, anything else that falls under 118?
Yeah, as well. Yeah. So a lot, there's a lot of the, there was a lot of conversation at the last meeting around the Title IX, and I very much agreed with the conversation that was at the table, and I just wanted to speak in my own words, support for all the conversation around, while I am personally not in favor of rolling these back, because I think, as you said, Stephanie, we kind of felt like the policies were catching up to where we were anyway. I don't want this by any means to feel to parents like we're rolling back anything that we're doing to support students. I think all of us firmly believe that every student needs to come to the school and feel safe and secure and welcome and included to be able to learn in an engaged environment. And this goes beyond the Title IX stuff. I mean, we've had, you know, there's other issues. There's always issues with student behavior in the school, and we try, I know, the, not just the administration, the staff, the teachers, everybody inside the schools, try to be there for the students when they can. I think we clearly have opportunities for improvement, as we always do, communicate better, just review our policies, ask the right questions, try to do what we can to prevent these things from happening. We're never going to squash it, but it is our goal to prevent as much as possible and respond appropriately when students are in this situation. So I agreed with the comments last night at the last board meeting, and while I am going to go ahead and vote for this because it's federal. gonna go ahead and vote for this because it's federal law, I don't necessarily personally believe in the rollbacks, and it doesn't change any position of how we go to support our students when, during the school days and the school year.
Well, I appreciate that, Wesley, because I can't go support this. I mean, there's a number of reasons why. I mean, I completely agree that we've been working well, I mean, we do everything we can to support our students, but we've been focusing on absenteeism for a long time, and we've actually been declining, absenteeism has been declining, and attendance rates have been, excuse me, increasing. But I guess I'm concerned that by approving these policies, that reverse Title IX protections back to 2020, we actually are gonna make many students feel uncomfortable coming to school, thus possibly dragging our attendance rates lower. In fact, there was like a 2021 study by NIH that concluded that there is a correlation between school absenteeism and sexual harassment. The NIH recommends creating a safe and supportive educational environment, which District 96, excuse me, District 96 already does. But by reversing the policies back to what they were in 2020, we are reducing those protections, which could lead to increased absenteeism. And yes, there are state laws that supersede our policies that should, should be in the effort of work, still offer the protections that our students, our community, come to expect. I also know that our district will do everything, as you mentioned, to protect the students and create a safe and equitable learning environment. Though, it is my belief that by voting to reduce the Title IX protections, to comply with a Dear Colleague Letter, is not the example we should be setting for our students. We teach our students that we live in a democracy that is created, that is governed by the Constitution. We teach our students that laws are created by the people and for the people, not by one person. We need to be an example to our alleged students to protect all our students. And consequently, I cannot and will not vote to reverse our Title IX protections.
Any other comments, questions, dialogue before I re-motion for a vote?
I guess I'd just like to understand that a little bit more. Is it required that our policy be amended for, to meet what is required legislatively? Like, if we do not amend this policy, will our policy be out of step with legislation?
My understanding.
Okay.
From a legal perspective. And that, and I'll just add that as challenging as the shift to the 2020, there are still protections in place through the non-harassment, the anti-bullying, et cetera, as a way to make, ensure that we're sort of addressing all student needs. And that one of the things our own attorney cautioned us on is that the policy also includes some of the procedural elements of how to correctly conduct a legally appropriate investigation. And so by potentially not addressing the new policy, that we would be out of compliance with our investigative procedures, which could create other liabilities. Stephanie, would you agree with that? I mean, yeah.
David? Appreciate where you're coming from. I share a lot of the same beliefs around this that you do, so I appreciate you saying all those things. I, I think where I lie here is that I want to be in support of our policy abiding by what's required by legislation, and so I, I will regrettingly have to support this.
And I appreciate you asking that question, because that was sort of the first question, right? Even if we kept it as-is, that, there's still not an avenue federally to, to file something unless it falls under the 2020 definitions. But as a school board, you know, we can, we must, we will, you know, take actions to continue to safeguard our students, even as these federal kind of Title IX protections revert back to the 2020 regulations nationwide, following, you know, that, that case. And we'll continue to lean on, you know, kind of state and local anti-discrimination laws, and I just appreciate, you know, being part of a board that seems to, to be in support of that as well. But, yeah, with the same sentiment, that's how I will go forward with my vote this evening. Once you re-motion.
Marlo, ma'am? Okay. Okay, I will re-motion. Is there a, is there a motion for the Board of Education to approve the second reading and adoption of Press Plus number 118 policies with Policy 7:190, Student Behavior, removing the word receiving in a few spots as presented in Board Book, and the Policy 2:150 Committee's D96 edits, which is adding our Family and Community Partnerships Committee into the list of committees we have, as presented otherwise?
So moved. Second.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Okay. Ms. Kalik?
Aye.
Ms. Gunn?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Ms. Claps?
Aye.
Mr. Olick?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
And Mr. Mayorhead?
Aye.
One other thing that I kind of kept separate, but is related to this, before we move into 119, just with the anti-discrimination stuff more broadly, there's been some dialogue that we've had in that, and I've been in, in planning this meeting with Dr. Ryan Toye. We'll have a, at an upcoming Cal meeting, I won't commit to it specifically, but there's been a lot of work done over the summer of just sort of evaluating our processes, and there's gonna be some more information related to that brought to us in a presentation at a future Cal meeting for us to talk about, so very interested to get to that. There's a lot of this topic going on right now, so just trying to be as prepared as possible for, for situations and on board with how to react if, if something were to happen, so.
And I'll just add to it, just that our psychologists and social work specifically worked together this summer with Nora around looking at just the different levels of behaviors that students may engage in when they're in a bullying or harassing situation in particular. And again, we are, by law, we are specifically required not to be lockstep about how we address these things, but to be very supportive and very individualized in how we address these things. But also to give teachers kind of a menu or a set of choices so that they feel that they're operating within more shared and unified cohesive and organized approaches. So, yeah, I think we will bring it to a Cal if that's of interest to everybody, and it sounds like it would be.
Yeah, I think that'd be good. Thank you for that work. That has been done. Looking forward to hearing more about that. Okay, Press Policies, number, Press Plus number 118 Policies. Before I motion, we've got a couple things on this one, so Stephanie, you wanna walk us through those?
Oh, sure, go first. Actually, well, I didn't have many. So the 119 is predominantly or all actually kind of monitoring and review, the five-year review. So, you know, Press is continual, like, quality assurance goal, to ensure that, you know, we are continually reviewing all the pieces of our manual every five years. The one that stood out the most, that came up in discussion during the first read, was 280, which is the oath that we have all taken. And whether or not, you know, just to encourage appropriate conduct, boards can have their policy express, like, the potential consequences for violating the oath of office, and there was some suggested language that we could include as part of 280. And that, which essentially then just references or cross-references an existing policy we have on, you know, board member removal from office. I think at least from the conversation at the table, it felt like the majority of the board was generally in favor of adding this optional, this optional line, this optional sentence to Policy 280. So the way that it is presented in Board Book, the default was no, but in, in Board Book, it is identified as yes, that we want to add that additional sentence, so. If you don't want to, you would then vote no on, on it.
Yep, and I, yeah, I think it sounded like you already had four at the last meeting, I think if I heard correctly. I was in favor of it, because it doesn't really change it, and just talking with you yesterday, it's not really modifying the policy itself, it's just cross-referencing back, which I think a couple people said, just for clarity of, you know, seriousness of this, I, I kind of agree with that, and I don't think it hurts to just cross-reference the other policy that we are beholden to this oath. Is that the only one that we had? Yeah, I guess, because it was the, the receiving, it was in the other one. Okay. Everything else is as-is. Any other questions or discussions before I put that in the motion? Nope. Okay. Is there a motion for the Board of Education to approve the second reading and adoption of Press Plus number 118 policies as presented with Policy 2:80, Board Member Oath and Conduct, adding the appro, the cross-reference language as presented?
So move. Second.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Okay. Okay, Ms. Claps?
Aye.
Ms. Kalik?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mr. Olick?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Ms. Gunn?
Aye.
And Mr. Mayorhead?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
All right, our last one is a collection of intergovernmental agreements. We've got the Crossing Guard Agreement with Riverside Before and After Care, which is, I guess, a revised and updated IGA that we approved recently. Reporting things between villages. The one I had a question about was the tennis courts. Do we need the tennis court striding thing anymore?
You know, it's interesting, there's an article, I don't know if people had a chance to catch it, in the Landmark today about the village making decisions about the tennis courts over at Blythe, and they, they, they mentioned the agreement that we had not fulfilled, and they say it in, because we were at that time starting to make other plans about how we might use the space. David, you're not, you read the article.
I've seen that one.
So it's, it's kind of like null and void, because we just didn't do it, but it is a current sitting IGA. I guess we should...
Do we just need to enact it, being ended? I didn't read the whole thing, but there's usually like a...
Can we not just, can we just not redo it? Right, we're not doing it, yeah.
Because it'll wrap up with the...
I have to read the termination piece of it.
Yeah, and I, I didn't do that here, it just caught my attention of whether we even needed that, because we're gonna do the playground piece, which is the next IGA in here, but they're gonna do the tennis, like, redevelop that tennis court into something else, so. Okay, and then Riverside TV, an intergovernmental shared facilities agreement with Brookfield, snow removal with the Village of Brookfield, and another reciprocal reporting agreement with the Village of Brookfield. So a lot of inter, just contractual stuff to make sure that we've got good practices between our governmental organizations. Other than the tennis court thing, was there any other comments or questions that anybody had on any of these other IGAs before we vote?
I had a quick question about the first one, that said the L4A. It mentions, I think this is from 2015, 2015, 2016, says the school district total payment obligation shall not exceed $30,000. It says, that's not even correct, because it says $30,000 spelled out and then mentions $35,000. But then it also says it'll increase by the CPI every year, so I was just curious as to what that amount has grown to.
Yeah, I just don't have that, I can get it for you.
Yeah, I know, just in my future reading, maybe we could.
Yeah.
But that's interesting that those, I didn't notice until I just read it, that the number written versus, versus the, the digits doesn't equal each other.
And this is...
And that was the first intergovernmental agreement?
Yeah, the L4A.
And then you'd like to know the actual cost annually at this point?
Yes, and if we can include that every year thereafter, I think that would be good.
Effective on the date that both parties sign it, so this is from 2015?
Yeah, I think so.
Yep. Do we have, we should prob, yeah, we should probably look into the other ones to make sure.
And then look into the term termination on the tennis court.
Okay.
There's actually a part under 6C, but numerically it says $35,000, but in word form it says $30,000, under the termination and default, on page five of that agreement.
Yeah, the same issues there.
Yep. For the 2015, 2016 school year. We do update these every year, right, with the...
No, they, most of them have, say that they are in effect until they are, for some reason, canceled. And so I think this is something we started a number of years ago, that the board wanted to review them annually, and the legal advice is that you not revote on them every year, because they were voted on and signed by a certain board at a certain time with language specific to how they continue. But that one sounds like there's just an error, as well as a question about the actual cost, so that one we can take a closer look at.
Okay, so it doesn't technically matter that the dates get updated every year and the dollar amounts, even if it is just multiplying it by a factor that it gets updated, we just leave it as this language unless we want to change it?
Right, it sounds like there's just that error, though, $30,000, $35,000, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, those two spots.
I was told to let that one sit forevermore.
Yes, I've heard the same.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I know Jim Fitton did track the costs on that, so we can, I'm sure we have documents that's just gonna take me, working with Jim and Mark to get that, organize that for you.
My preference is for it to stay $30,000.
I'll make a note of that.
So change the number, not the words, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay, and I...
Does wording take precedence over the written number? That's what I thought.
Supposed to.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Supposed to, but I worked in check cashing for a long time, it doesn't.
All right, and I did say before we vote, but this is not an actual item, this is just a review item. Okay.
Something we agreed to do a number of years ago, look at them every, like, and look at you, David, because I think it was something you had recommended a while back, and we've been doing it, and I think it is a good practice.
Yep, yep, I agree.
Especially with this one being 10 years old, just being aware of what is continuing for, especially for new boards, because this one, what we're talking about was approved several years before I even joined, so, okay. All right, that is the end of our agenda, we have no new business for today. Do we have any additional public comment before we close? Nope. All right, future meeting dates, September 3rd is going to be a fully closed session, that is a rescheduling of our self-assessment with our IASB representative, that'll be at 6:00 PM in the Ames Library. September 17th will be our next regular board meeting at 7:00 PM here in the Hauser Learning Resource Center. October 1st, we will be at Hollywood's multipurpose room at 7:00 PM. And October 15th, we will have a regular business meeting at 7:00 PM here in the Hauser Learning Resource Center. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.
Wait, wait, wait. Go to the closed session.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. We need to go back into closed session. Not used to doing that, so thank you. Yeah, I'm just gonna go back to my... Yeah, so is there a motion to go back into closed for two items, any matter involving an individual student and the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of a specific employees, of specific employees of the district or legal counsel for the district, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee or against legal counsel for the district to determine its validity?
So move.
There will be no, any kind of action after this closed session. When we come back in, we will just adjourn the meeting. Kathy, could you call the roll?
Okay, Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mr. Olick?
Aye.
Ms. Claps?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Ms. Kalik?
Aye.
Ms. Gunn?
Aye.
And Mr. Mayorhead?
Aye.
Closed session.